Good evening, I'd like to welcome you in call to order. The September 27th Port Orchard City Council Regular Meeting. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one mission under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any proposed amendments to the published agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to add to the consent agenda to excuse Councilmember Beck Ashby from tonight's meeting.
A second?
Second.
A motion and a second to add to the consent agenda. Item 4C to excuse Councilmember Ashby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Item's been added. Any other modifications or additions to tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Mayor, I'd move that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
How about the entire agenda?
Well, okay, I'll go for that too.
Okay, a motion to approve the entire agenda as amended. And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda now, though.
Well, okay.
I think we want to have comments from the public first, maybe?
Oh, how about that? Thank you, Clerk Reinsen. We have, I was firing through the agenda here. How about citizens' comments, anyone who wished to comment this evening on any item on the agenda this evening? We have another comment period at the end of the meeting for items not on the agenda. Seeing none, okay, sorry about that. So, closed citizen comment and the consent agenda now. Someone wish to make a motion? No?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Right, a motion to approve consent. And a second, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda is approved. Presentation by Bob Hunter of Kitsap Public Utility District. Mr. Hunter. See, you have one of your board members too, we should probably recognize, Mr. Jim Sevillas in the audience, is a board member from KPUD.
First, I'd like to thank Rob for giving me the opportunity to present to the group tonight and answer any questions that you might have. Most of you know, I'm sure all of you know, that Kitsap PUD has a three-member board that has the exact same boundaries as county commissioners. We have four primary departments, which is water, sewer, water resource management, and our telecommunications piece. And so, we do lots of different things, but that being said, one of the reasons I'm here tonight has been a discussion, ongoing discussion about our expansion of broadband in Kitsap County.
And... Mr. Hunter, could you move the microphone up just a little bit? There we go.
Is that better?
Yep.
Okay. What I want to, the handout I gave you really talks about what our capital plan is for through 2021. And so, these, this is an aggressive broadband expansion for Kitsap PUD. You know, for the first decade, what we really did was we built to anchor institutions. So, we built to every school in Kitsap, except for one, Green Mountain Elementary out in West Kitsap. And that's part of this next build in 2017. We built to every library, every police station, every, every community location at which we thought community would be at, okay? That's been done, that was achieved, we accomplished that. Moving forward from there, we said, what's next? What's next is really the community. And really, the idea behind PUDs and why they really exist is to serve underserved and unserved customers. So, really, our plan was is, who do we serve? How do we do it? We developed a system, well, we purchased a software system called Couz. Mayor Patansu actually went online and surveyed on it. And really, what this survey does is, we basically developed a formula in which it says, if we get a certain number of a certain geographical area, we'll build it. And so, in 2017, this build that you see on the very first one is out in West Kitsap. I would tell you, West Kitsap is the largest area in Kitsap County that is unserved or underserved when it comes to broadband, most of which is, most of the service today is DSL. So, we had more than 450 surveyors in that area that came on and said, we want it, we'll pay for it, please do it. And so, the board moved, the formula is a more detailed formula, and it's really based on geographical boundaries and what it's reviewed by our telecom staff and says, you know, based on these numbers, we could build it if we only get half the take rate of the people who surveyed. So, half of those people hook up, the build's paid for in five years. So, it makes, and what it does is, why would we spend money and build to areas that have no interest? So, that's what drove us to this. So, it requires the people to ask for us to do it. So, this is the first area. They, more than 450 people went online, took the survey, said, please do it. And actually, the champion in that area is a, is a woman out in Seabec, first name's Donna. She calls our office every week to ask where we're at in process. So, we'll build this to them. You can see in 2000, in the very next page, 2018, our capital build, it's actually 2018, 2019, it is South Kitsap. In 2018, we're doing Berry Lake, Old Clifton, all right? That, really what that does is it's a redundancy loop, it closes a loop for us, it brings fiber to closer to developed movements, we know we have the McCormick Woods development happening, this will get us in that general area and, and other develops, other developments. I will tell you, in South Kitsap, we have two customers, only two. It's the library and the courthouse. So, there isn't a lot of interest for Kitsap PUD to do a lot of work in South Kitsap. That's probably primarily because you have a good provider called Wave, okay? So, that's a good thing for the people that live here. Recognize, our primary issue is about the people that are not provided with the level of service that you currently get. That being said, we have lots of interest in areas that have providers, especially on Baymerge Island, where people want just competition, they want an open access network. Understand, when we build it, we are, we are not a retailer, we are wholesale only. We have eight service providers on our backbone. Wave Cable is one of them. So, that means Wave Cable will provide services over our network, which is a real, I applaud Wave Cable for this. Comcast will not do that. That being said, what you get with Kitsap PUD fiber, with public fiber, is you don't get us as a retailer, you get options of service. So, for example, when we get done building this in, in West Kitsap, those community members, if they want to get connected to us, and they pay the fee for us to connect to us, they'll have a choice of eight different service providers. If, if they don't have the technical capacity and they need customer service, they can buy that service provider. If they're very technical-minded, know what everything's going on, don't need assistance, they'll buy the cheapest one, but it gives you options. And truly, that will keep service high and rates as low as they can be. So, that's Kitsap PUD's goal. In 2019, you can see, we will do one of two projects in 2019 in South Kitsap. One is 1.3 million, the other's down as low as 300,000. And it will really depend on what happens in 2018, which will guide us towards that. We've developed five-year plans, they're just plans, those things, plans tend to change, as I'm sure you know. And 2020, it's a central Kitsap build, 2021, we're back up in North Kitsap doing builds. So, you can look at the map and you can see everything we've built thus far. And basically, what will happen is if we get communities that go online and survey, it'll change our plan. We'll build to those communities. That being said, I do applaud the city of Port Orchard, they've been aggressive, Rob and, and Mark have been aggressive in making sure Kitsap PUD is paying attention to the South Kitsap area. I know we just recently had a invitation to meet with a development on, is it Mercer, Melcher Street? And I know we've had another invitation to meet with a warehouse that's being built about getting fiber to in it, in it. I know Rob and I have talked about making sure that developments, making sure we get notified, or developers or developments get conduit put in. If a development gets conduit put into it, it will automatically go under our CIP. We will automatically attempt to build to it as soon as we can to fill that conduit with fiber. This is really important. Many of the communities won't get fiber built to them purely because of the expense. Basically, the answer is, if we can tie to poles and run on poles, it's $3 a mile. If we have to go underground, it's over $30 a mile in rural Kitsap. In downtown areas, that number turns into $200 a mile because of asphalt.
A foot.
Yeah, or a foot, that's it. And, yeah, so it's $3 a foot, $30 a foot in rural Kitsap, in urban Kitsap, it's much more than that.
And if we put, if we put that conduit in, that number was really low.
That's why it's important to put the conduit. If we put the conduit in, we're back to, we're, we're actually probably below $3 a foot at that point. Because the $3 a foot, there's pole attachments that we have to do with PSC, there's poles you have to repair, all of those things that go into that $3 a foot. The cost of the fiber is just not that much money. It's, it's getting it to where we got to go. So, new homes, new developments, it seems as though the north of Paulsville area, there, there's lots of areas in rural North Kitsap that it might be because we're their water providers is why they're aware, and so, we get more surveys in that area. We send them a bill, they go to our website to pay their bills, they see, they see these opportunities. That may be it, that may be why we don't get as much in South Kitsap as we do in North Kitsap. It just might be that simple, that we're just not getting the word out. So, we'll do everything we can do to get the word out in South Kitsap as well.
Did you have information too about that survey and the, and the website for that?
What's that skipping?
The, the survey? You spoke to the survey, I know I've completed it, could you provide that to, to others?
Yeah, actually, I have some handouts, I'll, I'll, I'll give you each, I'll, I'll leave a set of handouts here, and it's just a three, it's a bi-fold handout. It can take you right to where you need to go to do that survey. And feel free to have anybody you know contact us. And if, if there's a champion in area, if you know a subdivision somewhere that has very poor service or DSL service, feel free to give that, that person, that homeowners' association person, our number. If they don't get a phone call returned to them right away, have them call the general manager, and they will. I would tell you, our staff on this issue, the staff in telecom is, is running 10 hours a day on this issue, because we have a lot of development going on, it's a small staff running this. And so, anyway, I'd be happy to answer any more questions if you have...
Just got one, Mark, I know we discussed it, have we made that part of our development standards yet, where getting that extra conduit in the ditch?
Yeah, our update, which is...
So, I know we've been talking about it, and that was a conversation Bob and I had, that ditches open, it doesn't cost hardly anything to put that extra piece of plastic in the ditch.
And for the most part, any developer we actually get to, that we get to talk to, they're all about it. I mean, they have no problem doing this, it's an insignificant cost to the development, and it, and it raises the value of the properties as a result. So, it's really getting to them, really, our challenge is getting to them. Again, the majority of water systems we own are on Baymerge Island and in North Kitsap, and so, we end up working with those developers to provide water to them, so we have this relationship at the ground floor we don't have in South Kitsap. Quite frankly, you guys have good water providers, you have, so...
Questions for Mr. Hunter?
I think I heard about your survey on June 22nd, it was posted to a Facebook group. Did, did your, did your, did the survey have a deadline, or is it ongoing?
It is ongoing, so we'll continue to use those surveys to drive our capital program in that area. So, it's ongoing, I will tell you, I have to say this, that Facebook group was one of the most difficult for us to get in, it's a closed group. And we knew, and they were talking about telecommunications, we could see their postings, our staff could, but you have to be invited to the group to post, and so...
Which group was that?
There's a gr, a very big active group in South Kitsap.
It's actually pretty easy to get in if you have a Kitsap address, but is Jeff Bollinger on your staff, or?
No.
No, okay. He's the one who posted something in Port Orchard, and there was a moderate amount of interest, but I'm thinking that maybe in the north end, are you able to tell your, your utility customers about this survey?
Oh, yeah.
And this may be something that hasn't been replicated down here.
That's right.
I have a feeling that people down here aren't aware of the survey, because we hear about complaints, of course, of service all the time, but I don't know if that, what that would translate into in terms of customers, but my sense is that people here haven't heard of the survey.
Well, I, you know, I, I believe in an open access network, I think this, I think if you look around the world, many, many countries are already there, all, all broadband is municipal, therefore, I mean, if you go to places like Sweden, if the Comcast in Sweden built infrastructure, everybody has to be allowed on it. That's the way it works there. Not that we want to be Sweden, however, I think, rather than have 15 different providers attached to every pole out here, the idea of, and have, you know, 10 different beds at the corner of everybody's property, you should have one. And I, and I think, in, in conversations with Comcast and CenturyLink, in, in a bigger broadband effort that's going on statewide, when we all get in the room, we all agree that ultimately, that's the way it should be, but there's more money in it the way it is, so...
Would there be any desire if we got a stock of surveys to have those included in a utility bill?
Yeah, I was just thinking that, I think that's a great idea. We would be happy to provide those.
Yeah, I am definitely to our website. Yes, so I'll work with Mr. Hunter to get that linked to our website for sure.
All right, thank you.
And we'll talk about, yes, thank you for coming.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Okay, we are on to our business items. We have item 7A, approval of a contract with Louis Berger for funding application development proposed, for proposed city projects. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Your Honor, Councilmembers. The Department of Ecology has opened a call for water quality financial assistance applications, which are due October 21st, 2016. To help staff complete the applications more efficiently and effectively, a request for proposal, or RFP, was sent out to three firms on August 26th, 2016. With proposals due September 7th, 2016, Louis Berger was the only firm that submitted an RFP for this project. They're going to prepare three project grant applications, the Arnold Creek application, the downtown retrofit, and 413 West Street, to determine the best fit for funding. Once the projects have been assessed and their viability in the funding program determined, Louis Berger, Louis Berger will help staff draft the final applications for submittal. Staff recommends that council authorize the mayor to enter into the contract with Louis Berger for funding application development and preparation for proposed city projects. And I would like to note that it is for, based on the proposal, $24,526 is their fee to prepare those three applications.
Which would be funded out of the stormwater utility.
And funded out of the stormwater utility.
Storm projects, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, Councilmember Lucarelli.
I move to authorize the mayor to enter into the contract with Louis Berger for funding application development for proposed city projects.
Second.
A second discussion?
Money well spent, again, to get us competitive, so I applaud that.
Okay, and, and while it's not quite completely clear in the staff report, they are completing these, the, helping staff complete these grant applications, so we'll have three grant applications moving forward. If we were awarded any of these, then we would in turn, turn to our stormwater utility for the matching funds, the grant match, versus having to leverage our entire stormwater utility to pay for these entire projects. So, it's, it's a great way for us to, you know, make those stormwater dollars go a lot farther, so. Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We are on to number 7B, approval of a lease with Ron Ness Associates, PLLC, for right-of-ways adjacent to 420 Klein Avenue. Clerk Reinsen.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. So, in 1981, the city approved Ness Associates special use permit to park vehicles on the right-ofway adjacent to his business located at 420 Klein Avenue, with the understanding that a lease agreement be signed between the city and the law firm. The leased area is approximately 1,800 square feet. The current lease was executed on June 28th, 2011, and is set to expire on October 10th, 2016. Upon review of the lease agreement, it was determined that the current appraisal on file was outdated and a new appraisal needed to be done to determine the current fair market value of the leased property. On July 14th, 2016, a contract was approved to hire Jim Freeman with Caldwell Banker Parkshore Real Estate to conduct the appraisal. The appraisal stated the current value of the leased area is worth $15,300 with a return rate, with a rate return of 6%, meaning that the annual leased amount should be $918. The city requires lease hold tax on leased property, the contract will include that requirement. Staff recommends the approval of the lease agreement as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the lease agreement with Ness Associates for leasing public rights of way adjacent to 420 Klein Avenue as described in the lease agreement presented.
Second. Motion and a second, is there any discussion of this item?
How much was the previous lease?
Yeah, I was just gonna...
It was similar, this is maybe a few dollars more. It is really, if you can, you can see a picture of it in there, but it's really the edge of the streak right there, and it has no value really other than this property owner.
Right. I was just wondering if it was significantly different.
It, it, there isn't a significant difference.
Okay.
But there was a, a state requirement that we have an appraisal done, and that's where we said, had, I think, full appraisals done with a broker's price opinion, which was considerably less, I think we paid $200 or $300 for that versus, you know, a few thousand for a full appraisal.
Cool.
Okay, any other questions?
Was this a convenient square footage for 10 parking spaces, is that what it comes out to be?
It's just, yeah, it's just the area of the right-of-way he's using there, about 18, is it 1,800 square feet?
Yes.
Okay. He's improved it, you know, many years ago, I believe, and this has been an ongoing lease arrangement. If you're not aware, he did, Mr. Ness did pass away here, here in the last month, and the lease is now being executed with the party that bought his law practice, so... Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion, the lease is approved. We are on to item 7C, approval of a chimes request application for the Shire's Law Firm. Clerk Reinsen.
Yes, so on September 19th, 2016, Shire's Law Firm notified city staff that on October 5th, 2016, they will be celebrating their 100th anniversary, and asked if we could play "Happy Birthday" on our clock tower chimes. They are requesting the song to be played at 3:00 PM and 6:00 PM. On September 11th, 2000, council adopted a resolution number 1906 establishing policies for the city hall clock tower chimes. In addition to listening, listing the times the chimes will operate, the resolution states that the city council, the resolution states that with city council approval, committee, community events or activities may be supplemented with special music at hours other than noon and 5:00. Staff contacted the IT department, who noted that the ti, the chime system is only half functional and pre-programming music is not guaranteed to work. In order to ensure the city meets any obligation set forth by the resolution, manual supervision is highly recommended. Fiscal impact, it will take approximately 15 minutes of staff time needed for each song that is played outside of the regular duties and hours. Staff is looking for direction as to whether the council wants to approve the request or not.
Mr. Lucarelli.
I move to approve the chimes request application submitted by Shire's Law Firm as presented.
And I second it, we second it.
Two seconds, at least, so, any comments or questions?
Could you define what half-functional means?
It's not in good health.
Doesn't work very well.
Yeah.
I was hoping we could have request time.
Yeah, the time, many times, is not correct on it either, it's on our...
What would it take to...
It's an old system, and I believe it's a tape.
It's expensive.
And it just barely works, and so, for chimes and lights, Vince is up there and we wave, and he tries to get it to come out at the right time, and we just go, I hope it works again.
Now that's modern, oil boy.
And he gets it every time, but it is very old, and that's why we've been talking about updating our system in the future.
Yeah, I love it, it's one of the first things I heard when I came to this town.
We say very old, it's actually 17 years old, we dislike the building, but it is outdated technology, and it's one of, when we were talking about the siding and the other repairs that need to happen to the building, it's going to be very logical to make, you know, repairs and modifications to that while we've got the building shrouded in scaffolding. We don't want to, you know, go back up there again.
Has it got a big key that you have to wind it up, is that over?
It's not that old, but...
Unit itself is not up in the clock tower, it's just up...
Yeah, it's on the, on the fourth floor, yeah.
I think you would be surprised if you went up there and saw actually what was up there. I had, I had visions of some big mechanism and mice running around and keys that you could wind it, that would be a good system, but instead, it's a tinny little, looks like a transistor radio box, so, it's...
That's the clock.
That's the clock.
Yeah, the chimes is actually a computer box that's got computer chips that has a different music, and that's only on the third floor, and it's like the speakers.
Late 90s technology, yeah, okay.
Pretty 90s, because it's not even, it's pre-MP3, it's not like you can give it one of today's music formats and have it play it, it's, it might be a proprietary file format too.
It is.
That they've used. So, you can't just have like, you know, a Nirvana song play from our chimes unless it goes through them, for example.
I've heard some pretty hip songs.
Well, God up to the 60s, as far as I know, and I guess my only concern, and I completely support this, is that, are we concerned about the fiscal impact? It sounds like it's only half an hour of one staff person's time. For this, for this incident, I think that's negligible, but what if anybody wanted to have a special request?
I, I think this, we've got a business that's been in our community for 100 years, I think this is a pretty special event, and, and that's why, you know, we're not going to do this for Sean's birthday.
And I think it states it in the resolution as well, it can't be requested by an individual. It states in the policy that it has to be no personal request, and it has to be songs for an event or activities.
It's, it's a pretty significant event, I think.
I agree.
So, I think we can spare half an hour for, for something of this nature.
Let's do it.
Other questions or concerns? We'll be, you'll be voting on approval of a chimes and lights, chimes request application for the Shire's Law Firm. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion is approved. On to 7D, approval of the September 13th, 2016 council meeting minutes. I have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, sorry, September...
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, sorry, September thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen council meeting minutes.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Mr. Clausen, are you abstaining?
I'm abstaining, yes.
Okay. So, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. And one abstention. We are on to report of council committees. Oh my, I didn't print that page from agenda, but I can get it online here.
Well, I left my-
Finance committee?
I left my notes in my car from this morning's minute there meeting, so I'm working from memory, which is a real challenge since I can't even remember what I had for breakfast this morning. But I will share that the, we received the sales tax report. The sales tax is continuing to come in strong. I think we, if I remember the numbers correctly, it was about seven percent over.
On the year, and I think we were nine percent for the month, so it was very strong.
Been coming in quite well. The REIT money is coming in as well, better than we anticipated. So, that aspect of it looked fine. The rest of it, I, my memory is failing. So, Sean, do you remember the specifics?
Of which one?
Of the finance committee this morning.
Kind of kickoff, talked about budget and the budget process.
We talked about that basically and scheduled the first meeting, but we also, Mark, you were there and shared some-
That's Mark's projects.
Mark's projects on the DeKalb Pier where that is coming in well. I think there's one change order that we may be faced with. Bay Street pedestrian pathway is coming in or moving forward well. I think we've got two of the properties purchased, if I remember correctly.
Two of the properties purchased, and now focusing on segment three, because we're going to be building that in two thousand and seventeen.
And then we talked a bit about-
Share with us the-
Tremont funding.
Funding and where we were with that, and the treasurer shared with the anticipated debt. That's going to be about a five hundred thousand annual payment for that. Kind of got that figured out as well, so.
I can change pending some of the other outcomes of much support.
Yeah.
And then REIT revenues.
Yep, talked about that.
Yeah, revenues are fine, so. Sorry, I don't have more specifics, but I'll go on the cars.
It's good news.
Yeah.
And economic development tourism. Somebody got Beck, a report on Beck's, from Beck's committee. Looks like the next meeting is October tenth.
I didn't know she'd be absent. I'd, I was at that committee meeting. I would supply information, but I didn't, I don't have it at my fingertips.
We can get it next meeting. Utility Committee?
Yes, we met September nineteenth. It was a very short meeting, and one thing we talked about was requests to address sewer fees for small business, specifically a small daycare. There are some rate change suggestions that will be taken to work study on that issue. Also, we talked about discussion of well number nine, the water quality retrofit design, an ongoing solution to a problem that has existed for a period of time. Progress, it was a progress update, and it looks like it should be wrapped up this year. We had a heads up on some stormwater code and L I D. We also had a brief discussion on fire hydrant operation assessment, which is underway right now. There are some fire hydrants that are needing some improvements, valves that don't operate correctly and that kind of thing, and Public Works is working on that quite diligently. The next meeting will be Monday, October seventeenth at nine thirty A M.
Sewer advisory committee?
Will be meeting October nineteenth at six thirty, and that will be at the West Sound Utility Building.
I'm just digress to the announcement of our next meeting, with that budget meeting on the October tenth, six P M. Here, City Hall?
Yes.
Right. And then we also talked about that the schedule for the finance committee will probably largely be driven by the upcoming budget process. Probably adding many more meetings as we get into a fairly heavy lift, embarking upon a two-year budget cycle for the first time. And so we'll try to conduct other finance-related committee business in accordance with those budget meetings. So, October tenth, six P M. at City Hall will be our first budget kickoff meeting.
Land use.
So, land use met on the twenty-first last week. President was myself, the mayor, council members Cuciardi and Clausen, as well as staff members Dorsey, Bond, and Selle. The first item was a presentation by Mr. Eric Herzog of Mobility. Mobility would like to franchise with the city for small antennas, either standalone or co-located on poles and rights of ways, to enhance wireless data transmission, which is under increasing pressure by mobile users. So the service would support a major carrier. Staff asked for more information on the proposal, such as cost, locations, heights, and simulations. And Eric said he would get back to us. There's been no date for the next discussion that's been set. So the next item was a discussion about pickleball courts, and we had some local pickleball players ask if we could paint overlay, some yellow lines on our two Vansy tennis courts. And we thought that was a reasonable request. We also got to talk a little bit about the Givens Courts and decided that it might be worthwhile to dedicate one of those courts to pickleball alone, so you don't have the duplication of lines. And we agreed that this was a reasonable request, subject to two thousand and seventeen budgeting for both resurfacing and redoing the net supports, because due to the tensioning over the years, they're kind of caving in on each other. So that, that's, I think, an exciting thing for the community to look forward to. Pickleball is picking up steam as a, as a sport across the nation. The next item was miscellaneous code discussion. So we talked about proposed code for accessory dwelling units, downtown overlay district, and view protection overlay district. We talked about modifying accessory dwelling units, so they have a little, little more flexibility than, than currently. We talked about deleting the view protection overlay district, district nuisance claims as a city process, so the city would no longer be involved in neighbor disputes. However, there were other changes to the proposed downtown overlay district that were not supported by the planning commission, and staff agreed to look at how residential units could be allowed in the downtown overlay district, and this will be brought to work study on October eighteenth. The next item was a discussion about residential design, design standards. Staff advised that we need to consider design standards for a single-family residential and duplex development, given the increase in development coming, as well as some recent examples of development with poor features in their construction. So, staff advised that this should, should be something that is sent out to stakeholders, such as Kitsap Building Association and Kitsap Alliance Realtors for review and other stakeholders, and then to the planning commission for a hearing. And the last item was a presentation on pedestrian crossing guidelines. Staff reviewed those guidelines to show when and where they may be needed, and more information will come to the council in a November work study.
Did I miss anything? I think you nailed it. Lodging tax, Mr. Chang.
There was no meeting, but the, the next meeting will be in mid-October with the full committee. And since it's not going to happen until the seventeenth, I was asked today if perhaps we should extend the application deadline from the third of October to the tenth. And that sounds fine to me. I don't, okay. So, yeah. So the applications will be extended through Monday, October tenth at four P M. And I just have one unrelated item. I heard from a business owner who was wondering if we might have a declaration for pet adoption day. He specifically mentioned a lot of things like birds and parrots, but perhaps something more general like pet adoption might be something you'd get behind if we get language or something.
Is there a national pet adoption day?
I heard early October, which is around the corner. But maybe I'll see if they have language and we can present it for, okay.
We haven't been doing a whole lot in the way of proclamations, so it's kind of been purposeful. I was keeping this more of a business meeting. There are, and it's not that I won't consider doing them, but, you know, I feel probably, it's probably more appropriate to present proclamations to folks versus bogging our meeting down, but-
Or we could maybe put them on the website, you know, maybe you could-
Would that be a purposeful proclamation program, like Mr. Dorsey?
Mr. Clausen on the tenth? Yes.
Columbus Day?
Columbus Day. We, I believe we are.
Yeah, it's a-
Normal.
Yes, city is open for business that day. We-
Have swapped that day with the day after Thanksgiving.
Okay.
So we're open for business.
Application deadline, I wanted to make sure that it could be received at four o'clock.
Okay, we are on to festival chimes and lights?
Yes, we met September twentieth, and we had quite a lot on the agenda. It's been determined that the garlands that we currently have in the reeds are going to be pitchy patched together to be used this year. We had quite an in-depth report from city staff about the condition of the garlands and especially the light fixtures, the sockets. But we will make do with what we have, and we may have a couple of garlands that won't have lights, but nonetheless, it will still be very festive. But next year, money's going to be in the budget so that we can replace the decorations. So I'm hopeful that we can be looking ahead to try to purchase these at a good price at year end to get the best money, the best value for our dollar. Also, Saints Car Club will be providing the city Christmas tree this year, and we're working out the logistics for Public Works to be able to take over the tree once they bring it or to the city. That's a very generous offering on their part, and we're very grateful for it. We also will be putting a chimes and lights flyer into the utility billing as usual, and that has been done, and we'll get that in the next billing or two.
They were going to try, we were running a little behind this year, so they were really going to really push to try and get it out in this month's cycle, which I believe is the McCormick Woods section. So, we're hoping that we can get it out this month for this cycle and not get it out to them two days before the event, so we'll see.
And also, we're working on the brochure. We're working on the schedule right now, coordinating the events, the choirs, and all the details. The theme this year, the Sounds of Christmas, December third is, is the event, and it looks to be another one, another great event. So that's pretty much it. Our next meeting will be October seventeenth here at three thirty P M.
Wonderful. Okay, on to the mayor's report. We're working hard on the new website. We were going to implement it this week. We've decided that, working with the vendor on this, and we will go live with it on Monday, the third. So next Monday, it will be up and running. So if you're looking for your council packets and you haven't looked at the page yet, or if you haven't looked at it enough to be familiar with it, where everything's at, you will find the council icon about, towards the bottom of the page. Click on that. Top left corner, it says council packets, and you'll click on it there, be able to find your council packets. Harman talked about public notices in the independent. We really can't control where the independent puts those, but we are going to put those on a public notice tab on the new webpage. I'm in the process of creating that. I, last week, attended a kickoff meeting for the next generation orca. Myself and Commissioner Gilder were part of a regional group that was put together, and that new system for the fare, for fare systems for our regional transportation system will need to be in place by two thousand and twenty-one. So they're just starting this process for a, you know, your ferries, your buses, and all the other things it could be. Hopefully, it's going to involve one of these for those that have, those of us that have one versus a card. But we still need to have cards for folks that don't have potentially a smartphone. So, it'll be most likely an open source system, unlike the current system that has all the data on the card itself. So, lots of changes and with all, you know, every, from readers that are on every bus in four counties, state ferry systems, there's a lot of infrastructure and planning that goes into that. So, if you're not aware or haven't heard about it yet, Friday, ten o'clock, we're going to be cutting the ribbon on the new DeKalb Pier. Excited about that. Also met yesterday with Ali Kashi. He's the new owner of the Lighthouse property. He's going to attend the ribbon cutting, he said, and have a chance to meet him if you'd like. They're remodeling the building at this time. Should be done late November with the remodel, but he is going to wait till after the holidays to open, so just after the first of the year, the remodel facility should be open. Got a very nicely written letter to me that we're going to post on the website about chromium, if you haven't heard about that in the media, and our water system and the tests that were done on that. So feel free to read that. I won't read it into the record here tonight, but nice job to Thomas Hunter, who prepared that for us. Call for projects on, for K R C C. I had a meeting yesterday with Claire, and the next call for projects has been two thousand and seventeen for funding in two thousand and twenty. And so we're preparing for that Anderson Hill Roundabout will most likely be our project that we present in that application process. If you can think of anything else. We need to have it, lesson learned from Tremont. Remember, we're going to have, anything we submit is going to be already designed, and we're pursuing construction funding versus a design. So we'll be at seventy percent design by the end of the year, and should have it completely designed in two thousand and seventeen and ready for that application process in two thousand and eighteen. Just wanted to take a moment to, Thomas prepared a, a little memo for me today, too, on a number of projects that Public Works took on. It was, we're preparing the budget this year. We're looking at all the things that the Public Works has done this past year that we, we haven't tackled in the past, and we were able to save over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year by doing work ourselves versus hiring out to contractors. And so some examples of that are a repair to the box culvert for Arnold Creek, that ditching that I previously talked about on one sixty-six, a sewer main repair on Farragut, lateral sewer repairs, a water main replacement on Bill and Jones Street, and the, recently we dug out a sewer manhole. How deep was that? Seventeen, nineteen feet, something of that nature, in the middle of Port Orchard Boulevard, and we closed the road, and they rented a massive excavator and performed that work ourselves. So we would have never contemplated even doing a project like that in the past. So hats off to the Public Works guys. Just about done. We're going to be closing Friday on the seven twenty Prospect Street and get going on the improvements to that. And our new I T specialist is on the job, and due to our space challenges, that storage room right there is his new office. So we cleaned that out, and he's in, got somebody else in another closet, so.
His last name is Storage.
Yeah.
Don't tell the mayor there's a little room behind that door. He'll probably use it.
Yes.
We also attended a KEDA meeting this, this past week.
That's true.
And, and a lot of discussion was about the growth that's going to be taking place in the Silverdale area and basically some of the fallout to our communities regarding that growth. And something that John Powers mentioned is, the hospital over there will employ a thousand nurses. And he was talking about what that means, how many medical personnel will be hired, they'll need housing, that'll affect our schools. So there will be a lot of growth coming in the next years, and we need to plan for it, and of course, we are.
Any other reports from council members?
Did you want to mention the homeless meeting?
That is-
Ten eighteen.
Do you have that date off the top of your head?
Ten eighteen.
Ten eighteen.
Ten eighteen here, City Hall, four P M. And we'll have a development regulations meeting just before that and then work study. So all of them have the same table configuration, so be hot seat in the chairs there.
Four o'clock?
Four o'clock, yep. And I think the development regs are at two that same day. There's a meeting coming, so be a busy day.
It's the work study day.
Mr. Dorsey, you got a department head report?
I'll probably have it in here.
Sure you do.
You, you pretty much hit.
Did I? Almost everything?
I mean, we had the, the Tremont V E is complete. I have the draft report. We're having a phone conversation tomorrow with the team to determine which recommended, recommended, recommend, recommendations for implementation will be accepted by the team. But we have between, you know, one and a half to two million dollars identified right now as potential items. So that's pretty good at a ninety-five percent V E. The team had some very creative suggestions, so we'll definitely see some savings in that. So we'll definitely see some savings in that, as well as there was a built-in constructability. So we're moving towards the ever-important October, mid-October response to TIB to make sure that we've checked all their boxes for their comfort to fund the project. So that's really our main driver right now, is that mid-October deadline.
And then we got the draft payment management system report, too. And it was comforting to see that our streets are better than the average. But the uncomfortable thing was the dollar amount needed to fund street improvements. So more to come on that. We'll have that probably at a work study in the next month or so.
In November, December, we'll typically see the presentation on the crosswalk policy, which will then lead to an ordinance in early 2018. The ADA transition plan is also nearing completion, along with the payment management system. So we're... I guess some departments are cruising into the year. This is like our... Probably our busiest time in finishing out 2016 work, so...
Sharon, do you have anything for us?
Not this time.
Okay. Brandy?
I just want to say I'm excited to have some extra IT help. I don't know if anybody's noticed. I haven't had a chance to use it, but I have a knob on my inverter box instead of using this tool. I don't... Excuse my ignorance of what this machine is... Tool is called, but... So now I have a knob.
You have a knob? Looks like you stole it off a light fixture, though.
I don't care where you got it from, but it works, and I'm okay with that, so... And then, as the mayor mentioned, the decal pier ribbon cutting is coming up this Friday. And the quorum notice has been published to the public for the noticing. And then I just want to remind you that, as you know, that Shire's law firm is having the 100th-year anniversary celebration, and they have invited the full council. And so it doesn't require a quorum notice to the public as that... As council members attending such event, that discussion of city business is off limits. So it's just a celebratory event that you guys should have fun at, and no city business can be discussed. Okay? Other than that, that's all I have.
Wonderful. Okay, we're on to citizens' comments. Anyone wishing to address the council? Yes, ma'am. Second row, yep. Please step to the microphone and identify yourself. You have three minutes.
I've never been here before.
Well, welcome.
My name is Andrea Burkholler. I live out on Glenwood Road. I've lived here 42 years. You may not remember, but I was one of the charter members of the Port Orchard Farmers Market when it was down next to Jordan's Western Ware Store. I wanted to bring a thing to the attention of the council that is bothering me. I read an article written by a man in charge of an observatory back east in the Farmer's Almanac. This concerns a tide, a major tide. Bay Street and the Marina is going to be in trouble if this is accurate. This is a 250-year event. It concerns... Well, the moons and the... The way they orbit is going to be a 250-year event that this is where it's going to hit to draw the tide up that high. And I made some copies. I didn't know how many people, but I made some copies.
If you can get the clerk there, she'll get them to... Oh, okay. The clerk will be... Put them in our mailboxes. Wonderful.
What was the date of that?
The date is November 14 and November 15. So this is something you might look into and see if we need to do something to protect Bay Street or protect the Marina. Remember, the last time we had a big tide and a storm and you closed Bay Street, the businesses were sandbagged, and there was driftwood in the street. This one is going to be worse. So I just want to bring a heads-up so you can look into it and see what can be done and protect the community.
All right. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Yes, Jerry?
Last Thursday, I went to a State Parks Department Commissioners Meeting in Squim. And one of the things that they had was they had their citizen comment for anything not on the agenda at the start so that those people that weren't interested in any of the other items could speak and then leave the meeting. And I really think that you need to think about that. We don't have a lot of people that come and speak anyway. And there are... We kept, I forget their names, but the elderly couple here for a whole meeting. And all it was to give them recognition for doing 25 years of service to the community. And things like that shouldn't happen. So I think you need to really think about your policy. It doesn't accomplish anything. And like Sean said, you guys are multitaskers. If somebody says something that bothers you, you should be able to get through that and still be able to handle your meeting. And it hasn't accomplished anything other than irritate some people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Others wishing to comment this evening? Okay. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Whittleton. I'm going to need glasses for this. I've been pondering some of the things that I've been observing in some of the committee meetings. And one of them came up actually during the work study where the survey of City Hall, it was observed that we need 121 parking places. And currently, we have 67. And so therefore, we need 54. And I was pondering this because I realized that we're also talking about getting rid of parking down by the waterfront and wondering if we have a plan to accommodate the parking we're losing and the parking we need. And wondering if that's a real prudent thing to do at this time. Also, what I'm concerned about is the Farmers Market and all the activities that we have down on the pavement. Not that it wouldn't be nice to have green space, however. One of the other points that was brought up was that was that the bumpers hanging over the boardwalk. And what I'm concerned about are some of the bumpers that are hanging over the sidewalk down here, down by the auto place. And I don't know if we could... Since we lease some of that property, I don't know if we can create like a green zone along there as well. That was one thing. My other thing is the building formerly known as the West Sound Bank is kind of derelict right now. And we still don't have anything to address these vacant buildings that are leaning towards dereliction. I think we can do something about the landscaping. I think we have something in as far as height of grass and things like that. But I went down and took pictures. There's black plastic around the sign. It just looks bad. And the neighboring properties, they keep their landscaping up. So I would just ask you to give some attention to that. The last thing was today at the Finance Committee meeting, when it was talked about a change order to allocate $10,000, maybe a little bit more, to the Marine Company that I would assume would do diligence, since this is sort of their ballywag. And I would like to know if the public will be notified if we, in fact, do delegate that money to them to kind of help them recoup, because I'm really not sure if that's the way to go. I mean, I sort of expect these contractors to be ahead of the game, check the tides, check the depths, know all this stuff before they start. And if we start that precedent, I don't know how that... I just don't see how that's good business. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to comment?
Hello. I'm Jennifer Hardison. I'm with the South Kitsap Healthline Food Bank here in Port Orchard. And I'm here basically just to bring a little awareness to everybody about what we do. I know some of you know what we do. We serve about 17,000 families locally on an annual basis. And we need help. We're really struggling right now. We have the nursery, and that brings in some funding. We get very little funding, other than private support and then some occasional grants. We just... We need more help. And our county funding has been cut considerably. We had a very rough summer. We serve, on average, about 1,400 local families every month. And for us to continue to be able to do that, we are hoping that the city council might look at ways that you can get more involved. We feel that we provide a tremendous service to the city and the city residents. And we do that a lot of times just about all on our own. So if that's something that, you know, we can get more involved in working with you on, seeing how we can maybe partner better together to serve our low-income residents here in Port Orchard, we would be very grateful. So I'm going to try to come every now and then and keep you posted on what we've got going on. Thank you very much.
Jennifer, could you leave some information with our city clerk? Contact information?
I sure can.
Others wishing to comment? Yeah? Please.
You guys are popular today.
Hi, some of you guys already know me. My name is Danielle Rimbert. I'm a local business owner in Port Orchard. I've resided here for over 20 years. And I've been very active in the local arts community and many other nonprofit and local organizations. I know that you guys are doing a lot of hard work discussing the new biennial budget for the city of Port Orchard. And I've done a lot of reviewing over past budgets and preliminary records and municipal codes, because I like to nerd out on that kind of stuff. And one thing that I wanted to bring to your attention and have you maybe consider and bring to some of your meetings to discuss is arts in the community and how that plays a role through the city. Because there are many neighboring cities, such as Gig Harbor and Bremerton, that already have commissions in place. Gig Harbor's commission was formed in 2001, so that kind of leaves us a little behind the curve for that. And so, you know, in considering your budget, maybe either from the general fund or partnering with such organizations as like the Sydney Art Gallery or creating a community group to create a commission, even start with a small budget and then grow from there, to consider that. I've brought a copy of the Gig Harbor ordinance that was formed and the wording that they used to create that. And I also brought, you know, how... I brought from Kitsap County and Bremerton how their commission works. Bremerton works on a 1% commission for their arts program. So any construction that happens, they take 1% of that, and they give that back to art and the community. And then Gig Harbor pulls from the general fund and then from grants and from some others, you know, different kinds of things. The reason why I think that arts is important and should be considered for our community is because not only does it beautify the area, but we're creating an identity for ourselves. And so specific pieces create, you know, rather than just accepting donations. Within our code, we have code for accepting free donations of art, how to name the art, how to place the art and install the art, but none for funds set aside. The only wording I've seen is that council may discuss and then allot certain funds to purchase that. And I believe that artists should be paid for their work and not... I mean, I also donate many contributions of my art. I helped with the creation of the mural that's on the waterfront, downtown Port Orchard, and worked with the port and the city and leadership Kitsap for that. And I would be happy to help kind of contribute my knowledge of that and community support and be able to assist in any ideas that I could possibly give, you know, the council for that. So anyway, I brought my business card so that I can be contacted. I brought copies of those that you guys can make, and they can pass out. And, yeah, so thank you. Sorry for rambling.
Mr. Sevilli, you're the only one that hasn't spoke tonight. With that, our meeting's adjourned.